Okay, good morning, and I'll call the order. Can y'all hear me? Okay, I'll call the order, the April first, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance. And after that, I guess Pastor, I mean Pastor Wilk, hey, Sheriff Wilkie, do you mind giving our invocation this morning? I want to see Josh. So we'll, if you would though, let's stand for the pledge and we'll, we'll get started.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the Lord God, and to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Please have a seat.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We are especially grateful, as the Apostle Paul wrote in First Corinthians, chapter thirteen, verse thirteen, that "The three things that remain are faith, hope, and love." And following this Easter Sunday, Lord, I pray that we keep our hearts attuned to the message that this holiday offered, all of those in spirit of faith, hope, and love for those who are willing to accept it. Lord, I pray as we go forward today that the governance of this county be led by the wisdom of the five commissioners in this room today as they make decisions and plan the way forward for our county, that you would just give them a peace of mind, peace of heart, wisdom, strength, and guidance. In his name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. So this morning, the reason Commissioner Long couldn't be here is he had a work obligation that he had to go to. So that he won't be here today, but he wanted me to let you, let y'all know that. And I do appreciate this time of year and Easter, and it's kind of a rejuvenation of everything. And, and I appreciate what the Lord did for us on the cross. So our first order of business will be a public hearing. And this public hearing is regarding the approval of an economic development agreement with Premier Magnesia for local development and economic development activities. And the Vice President of Manufacturing Operations at Premier Magnesia, Matt Haynes, and our Community and Economic Development Director, David Francis, will be here to speak to that this morning. So welcome this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. It was a joyful Easter, that's for sure. So before you, is there a public hearing for Premier Magnesia? So just, you know, a little bit of a background that I'll share with you. When we talk about Premier Magnesia, you know, a lot of people in Haywood County know it as Giles. Premier is the new name that from two thousand and seven forward that they're operating under. But Giles originally began in nineteen fifty-four here in Waynesville. And they, they are the world headquarters for Premier, and Giles is here in Haywood County. They are North America's largest producer of Epsom salts and magnesium oxide. So all this manufacturing takes here, there are, you know, a company well over two hundred and seventy employees. We've done a previous economic development business, build and reuse grant for them that they completed last year. And we helped with that, and the state contributed two hundred thousand dollars for that upgrade when they were expanding. So what, you know, we've talked several times, had several meetings about Pactiv. So what happened, Pactiv closes down. Watco, who provides rail service, you know, to Pactiv, provided to Giles, went over in Jackson County. An immediate impact from that closure happened to Giles. So Watco, seventy percent of the business was with Pactiv. And the remaining of that was downline with, with Premier, Giles, and the other companies over in Jackson County. So we had our first meeting with Premier last April, a year ago. And how do we solve this? We, we had, we got, we had federal folks in the room, Watco. We had, you know, our state representatives, you know, Robin Ramsey, you know, Senator Tillis's, from Senator Tillis's office. And so we had a lot of people there, how do we solve this problem? What do we do next to make sure that we protect Premier from having another devastating consequences in Haywood County? So the folks at Watco, you know, worked out, you know, a plan to keep, you know, how they were going to restructure their business. But it really impacted Giles. And Matt can tell you a little bit more about, you know, how that would, how that impacts that happened here. But, so this is why we're here. You know, when we were contemplating our budget along with the state budget, we went to Raleigh and asked for some economic development recovery funds. And with this in mind, we knew that this was where we're going to help Giles with this, what, you know, from what happened with Pactiv. So what happened, you know, was that Giles was receiving rail cars seven days a week, twice a day. With the closure of Pactiv, it went down to five days, once a day. And their cost went up. A tremendous monthly cost went up to do that, to cover for the rail service. So the, so, you know, Premier came, come up with a plan that will, you know, help offload, be able to store, store more of their manufacturing chemicals that they need to complete the processes. And so, you know, Matt, again, Matt will describe that. But the funds that we're using for this economic development deal were actually came from the state, from the economic development grant that we received. We, we received four million dollars for economic development recovery. We're going to take one point four million, this is what the total project cost is of one point four million. Giles is contributing twenty percent of that cost. Before Matt comes up, do you have any questions, and I'll be back up after he.
And I want to appreciate Matt, Matt's a local guy, he's a local boy.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you being on with Giles and just kind of continuing the, you know, the workforce and building on it that, that y'all have developed over the years.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I may be slightly repetitive, David and I didn't compare notes, but I have some remarks. Again, I'm Matt Haynes, I'm Vice President of Operations for Premier Magnesia. As David said, we have been in this, in this area founded as Giles in the nineteen fifties. Giles was merged with Premier in two thousand and seven. So that's why we are working to have the community recognize Premier Magnesia. We're a family of roughly five hundred associates nationwide, with over half of those here, right here in Haywood County. We offer a broad range of magnesia-based products and solutions. The focus of our Haywood County operations, as David mentioned, are our Epsom salt operations. Over the last fifteen years, we have been blessed with growth in the markets that we serve. And, and we have had associated capacity expansions along the way. For Haywood County, this has meant a five hundred percent increase in the number of people that we employ here in Haywood County in the last fifteen years. We are the clear leader in our market segments and the largest producer and repackager of Epsom salts in the Americas. Our bulk facilities depend on rail service for the delivery of our two primary raw materials. One being magnesium oxide, which comes from our own mining operation in Nevada, the other being sulfuric acid. The reduction of rail service associated with the Pactiv closure represented a significant threat to our operations. As, as David mentioned, prior to the adjustment by Watco to the closure, we received rail switches two times per day, seven days per week. One on, one during the day and one at night. Their adjusted schedule now results in five day a week operations. So the focus of this project was to simply respond to that and bridge the gap between Friday and Monday, allowing our operations to continue to run. So this investment will serve to expand our offloading and storage capacities at our Commerce Street facility here in Waynesville and, and allow for that continuity of operations between rail service intervals. So I'd be happy to take any further questions about the project that the, that the Commissioners may have.
Not having any. Have any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate what you said about Matt. I, you know, Patrick Bradshaw was here, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about Haywood Advancement Foundation. And Matt and Patrick both went to NC State. So they have not been too kind to me over the last two weeks with their comments. So I've lost the bet, so here we go, so I'll do my Wolf Pack chant. But it is good, you know, to have, you know, I first met these two when I was working at Waynesville Middle School. And they, it's, they have, you know, I appreciate that they did come back home and have been contributors to our county and to things. So it's been, it's been very impressive, the work they have done. So with that, Mr. Chairman, you can open up the public hearing, and if you have comments on that.
Okay, would anyone care to address the board about this issue this morning? See, no one, I'll close that public hearing then, okay.
We will present the economic development agreement. Once we have the Giles and Premier going through a couple of checkoffs with the town in Waynesville. And we are waiting for the funds to come to the county. Upon that, we will present the economic development agreement to offer your approval at that point.
David, you might briefly, I, I just thought of this, you might briefly touch on the rail, what the railroad is, what, maybe what they've talked about the future is for that.
The Watco's been very patient in trying, you know, to figure out what's going to happen with the mill. You know, they were, at the time of the closure, they were around thirty-two, thirty-three. They reduced down to sixteen, and I think they're down to twelve now.
Employees.
Employees, correct. So they, the, they still have, you know, a strong belief that something's going to be there that they can, you know, use the rail service for. Kyle Ogle, I'd be glad to have Kyle, you know, come here, he's the general manager of our local line in Haywood County. And, but we are in contact with them almost weekly, you know, and seeing if they, you know, what they need, what they can get from us, what we need to do for them. You know, we were, worked with Watco and the governor's office and the federal's office. Where, you know, I think, remember Chairman, you, you signed a letter of support for the Chrissy Grant that they received, you know, last year. So I think, you know, those things, I think we still need to always be mindful and be supportive where we can with the rail. You know, you see a lot of rail lines that have, you know, been diminished and have no longer in use, you know, throughout. But I think this is a rail line that is vital, you know, with TS Hardwood closure, you know, earlier this year. Been a little bit more worried so about, you know, the continuing line over there, you know, over to Jackson. But they have two clients over there, so.
Not sure that a lot of people understand how important it is, you know, the railway. We definitely don't want to be trucking that stuff in. Congestion issue versus a cost, I'm sure, so the railway's real important, I know, so.
Yeah, my dad, my dad was a train engineer, and then Jennifer's dad worked for the railroad too. And Dad used to always say, he used to always say, son, the railroad keeps up its own road. And the truckers, they, they depend on, the, the government's building their roads. So, you know, the railroad has always been important. And, and that railroad was built through Haywood County, I believe, in the eighteen eighties. So that's how long it's been here, yeah, and everything. So anyway, it's just always been part of my life, I guess, and Jennifer's too, so. I hope it, I hope it continues, and we can get more industry in here to, to support that and not down your costs as time goes on. Didn't the state give them somewhat of a grant, the railroad?
Part of that Chrissy, Chrissy grant, that's an acronym that I, you know, I don't know exactly what, you know, that stood for, but that was a federal, and then they're, they're out for another grant as well, too. All right, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Reason I know that is my great grandmother used to tell my mother, which was her grandmother, my mother's grandmother, that she remembers them building the railroad through there with, by hand. You know, they didn't have big pieces of equipment, they did it by hand. A lot of it was prison labor, so that's back when you went to prison, it was a bad thing. Yeah, okay. Okay, next order of business will be our public comment session. Would anyone care to address the board during public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment session, and we'll move to constituent concerns. I want to mention a couple. I want to remind everyone of the Haywood County Solid Waste Department will be holding a spring household hazardous waste collection event on Saturday, May eighteenth, from nine AM to one PM at the Materials Recovery Center located at two seventy-eight Recycle Road Clyde. So if you've got chemicals laying around your house that you know that you can't get rid of, you can go that day, May eighteenth, from nine to one, and hopefully get rid of those. I know I always have a lot of paint, and that's when I take my paint there to get rid of. If you do have paint, if you dry out the cans, you can throw those in the, in the dumpsters if they're dry. But you can't if they have paint in them, you're not supposed to. Okay, does anyone have any other constituent concerns they want to mention this morning?
Just say something. We attended the Farm Bureau breakfast this morning, and a couple of things caught my attention that I just wanted to mention. And it was brought up about the farmers losing all their property and stuff to all these housing developments and stuff. And I can sort of relate to them on some of that stuff, because we've got to have farmland, you know. And then they were concerned about the, a lot of people coming in and buying property, you know, close to them and complaining about, you know, them still doing their farming business. And, and I just, we love all the people that, that move in here, and we appreciate them coming in and buying property and stuff. But if we don't have farmland, we don't eat. And that concerns me a little bit, that, that, that it's happening so much. It seems like from year to year, we keep noticing more and more people will come in and buy property next to farms and stuff, and then steadily complain. And that, I know there's probably not, nothing we can do to curtail that much, but I'd like to, I'd like to see if there's anything possible, any kind of action we could take to sort of slow that down a little bit. Because these, these people have a hard enough time farming and trying to make a living and stuff. And when you've got somebody continuously harassing you, that makes it a little tough when you're trying to make a living and doing these farms, especially these big dairy farms and stuff like that, that, that produce a lot of milk for a lot of schools and people and stuff. That was brought up this morning, and I, that sort of stuck to me a little bit, thinking about that. Because I've noticed myself in the last few years, people, even people that don't buy property, they'll come in and rent apartments and stuff, and then complain about the neighbors knowing the farms are there before they ever moved in here. And I, I just wonder if there's anything we can do to sort of curtail that any, some on time.
We have a voluntary farmland preservation ordinance. And then we, that, I guess Bryant's familiar with that, that we use to protect, David might be, did he leave? He probably left, but anyway.
It's usually the same people over and over, you know, that, that complain about these people. And I just, I just got a sort of soft spot for that, because it's happened to me before several times. You know, if you, if you move in next to a farm, that's what you should expect.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, is anybody else, anything? Okay, very good. Okay, our next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations. And the first one that we have is the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority, or the TDA. And it's their annual report. We have our TDA Director, Karina, and please pronounce your last name, Karina.
Rufier. Rufier.
Rufier. Okay, sorry.
I'm good, good morning, everybody. And I had a number for David, and he walked out of the room, so you'll have to share this with him. Today is day number three hundred and sixty-six, it's my one-year anniversary. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share this with you on my one-year anniversary. So you all have a hard copy of our annual report in front of you, and hopefully Haven will help me with the digital version.
So you came here on April Fool's Day, right?
I think technically it was April second, because of the leap year, it got bumped to April first, but. If anybody from the audience wants to see the annual report as well, it is on our website. I am not going to go through this whole thing, it is literally a calendar year's worth of work. I'm just going to highlight a few things for you, but please do read it in your spare time, if you are so inclined. And then reach out if you have any questions. So jumping to page four, please. One more. Keep going, keep going. One more. There we go. So part of what travel and tourism does to support our economy is we get to give back to our community. It's actually my favorite part of my job, is we get to manage funds that are given to us by visitors, and then we reinvest them back in our community, making it not just a better place to visit, but a better place to live. And so you'll see on pages four and five of the report, in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, we invested in twenty-five capital projects to the tune of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, all powered by visitors. And then another twenty-two marketing initiatives and events totaling three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. A full list of all of those projects is available on our website. But I'd just like to highlight, that's a big piece of what travel and tourism does, is it improves our community. Jumping ahead to marketing and paid media, that's obviously a big part of what we're supposed to do. We tell the story of Haywood County and encourage people to come visit. When I started, I learned, and I understand why, but we have a very fractured marketing message, and it confuses the consumer. So I stepped into this role looking at it through the lens of, I'm new here, let's tell the story to the visitor. So I stepped into this role looking at it through the lens of, "I'm new here, let's tell the story to the visitor, and maybe we'll see some improvements," and boy, have we ever. We've improved our emails, instead of sending four separate emails to four small email subscriber lists, we send the same email to more people, we're seeing higher open rates, higher click-through rates, which is essentially somebody saying, "I'm kind of interested in visiting, tell me more." So those are good marketing tactics. Jumping ahead to social media, and our social media manager is with me in the room today, Amy. We worked to consolidate our social media channels, we had so many separate fragmented channels. And by consolidating, we've increased our engagement on Instagram by ninety-five percent and on Facebook by one hundred and two percent. And again, the more you engage, the more people are seeing your stuff, the more you have a better chance of them wanting to come. We also knew this year, hired our very first public relations agency. That's where we get to work with experts who have relationships with travel media. And again, try to tell our story, but in a different way. So you can see on here, there's some highlights, we, we, in just four months, secured nine media placements, including Country Living, Fox News, and Travel Awaits. And I love the Fox News one, because it said, "Haywood County is one of eight amazing fall mountain towns to visit this year." You literally can't pay for that type of coverage, you kind of do, because we hired an agency, but it's a unique and different way of getting our story out to eyeballs that wouldn't necessarily see us. I'm going to jump to our welcome center. As a reminder, we do have a brick-and-mortar welcome center. We are sharing space in Lake Junealeska, and in twenty twenty-three, we welcomed over ten thousand visitors, sold six hundred and forty Great Smoky Mountains annual parking tags, and we passed out over fifty thousand printed visitor guides. We mailed some, we distribute them all over the county, and saw an impressive, almost two hundred and thirty thousand digital downloads of that same guide. All right, the last data I'm going to highlight is on the screen right now, Perfect Haven. This is, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about it in detail, but we, we subscribe to, I call it a big, very big brotherish, mobile tracking subscription, and it lets us see visitors to Haywood County. So you can see on that map where our visitors come from. The bigger the bubble, the more visitors come from that area, the darker the bubble, the more money they spend. So, thank you, Florida, please keep coming back. You'll also see seventy-nine percent of all visitors to Haywood County are from out of state. So when you think back to that reinvestment we're putting back into Haywood County, almost eighty percent of that is being paid by folks not from North Carolina, very powerful statistic. Thirty-eight percent of our visitors enjoy outdoor recreation, I'm sure that's no surprise to any of us. And if you can scroll down just a hair to the circle, there we go. That little circle there, forty-two cents of every dollar spent in Haywood County in twenty twenty-three came from visitors. Our visitors are super important to our total economy and to all of our small businesses. And there's a whole lot more data and info in here that I could read to you, but I'm going to pause so that I can go back to the other part of my presentation. Any questions on the annual report piece? Let's see, is this going to work? It didn't work. There we go. Okay, I always like to show our annual occupancy tax comparison, this shows you month over month for three years in a row. No surprise again, I'm sure to anybody in this room, we are a very seasonal destination, with our peaks June through October, and it's pretty quiet January, February, March, and December. This information is super helpful to us as we look to do a better job in the future. You may have heard of our Pigeon River Access Plan project, but I wanted to highlight it really quickly. This is a collaboration with, uh, the town of Canton, the town of Clyde, Haywood County Economic Development, and the TDA. We are co-funding a plan through our master plan process to look at the Pigeon River, county-owned and town-owned sites specifically, and determine, is there anything we can do to activate the river? That again goes back to, that our locals can use three hundred and sixty-five days a year, but our visitors might be able to use it as well, which then drives a little bit of spending. This project came through the Building Outdoor Communities Initiative, um, we actually applied for a grant, um, through Made by Mountains to, to do the plan. We unfortunately did not win the grant, but we all determined as, as a team that this project was so important, we wanted to do it anyways. So more to come on that. Other nifty things we are working on, I'm sure you've seen, uh, you probably saw that very cool ice sculpture out in front of the courthouse. That little girl's face is so adorable. Um, it was a fantastic three-day weekend in January, which you just saw, is one of our slowest months, and let's see if the video plays. So that is, uh, super exciting for us, it was our very first year producing a county-wide three-day event. You can see from all the footage, and we now have video footage and photography, uh, which will really set us up for more success. Next year, we had some amazing sponsors that helped us make this happen, volunteers this year. This is my favorite, two slides, fifty-five participating partners made this event happen. That really speaks to the power of collaborating and how when we all work together, it really makes a difference. So that's two slides full of partners. I love selling tickets, because then you know where people came from. So we can see, we sold, this is just the Maggie Valley Festival Grounds piece of it, but just shy of two thousand five hundred tickets. The majority of them were from around our area, but you can see, well, it's kind of hard to see on that map, but they were, excuse me, literally from North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Florida. So we drove ticket sales from five different states, and for those of you who did go, it was pouring rain and miserable, and I wore my waterproof boots and I still got wet, and we still sold five hundred and fifty-five tickets on the day of. So if that doesn't speak to the power of people are looking for something to do in January, I'm not sure what else can. We did a visitor survey, we asked people, "Where'd you go?" They went all over the county. We asked if they'd come back, most of them said yes, always a good thing. For the ones that came, we said, "Are you a local, a day trip visitor, or an overnight visitor?" Thirty-three, it, it's roughly a third, a third, a third. And then we said, "How many nights did you spend?" Two nights, three nights, four nights. Not only did they come, they spent the night. And we are very pleased to share that we are locking in January thirty-first, February first, and second, twenty twenty-five, for our second annual NC Smokies Ice Fest Weekend, so mark your calendars, please. We just opened our grants for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We, like you, are on a, um, a government fiscal year, July one to June thirty. Um, so please share with your constituents if they're interested. The next workshop, which is free and open, will be on April tenth at two PM. All of the grants are available, all the grant information, applications, guidelines at haywoodtda.com/grants. Deadline number one is May fifteenth, that is a mandatory deadline, and that will allow us time to work with our partners, hopefully help them improve their grants before the final deadline of June third. But if you want to apply, you have to hit that May fifteenth deadline. And finally, we've been a little busy, we're working on a master plan. Uh, I know some of you, um, made it to our session last week, but I'm just going to highlight a few quick things. We're working really, really hard to make sure this is Haywood County's master plan, not just the TDA's master plan. So you can see just some of the numbers, and these numbers are of the end of February, so they're going to go up after the work that we did with our consultants this past week. But we're working, we've reached out to our public land officials, our steering committee, uh, many of you, thank you, did one-on-one interviews, we had a whole bunch of community workshops, and we did digital surveys. Just last week, we met with Matthew and Sheriff Wilkie and some of our safety folk. So many people to really inform this plan holistically. What we've seen, when we asked stakeholders, so these are the seventy-eight people who live and work in Haywood County. What are three words that describe Haywood County to you? The bigger the word, if you haven't seen a word cloud, the bigger the word, the more often it was said. So hiking mountains, outdoors adventures, Blue Ridge Parkway, Great Smoky Mountains National Park, beautiful. But if you look really closely, there is not a single negative word in that word cloud. That's how proud we all are, excuse me, of Haywood County, whether you're transplant like me or a multi-generation local like Kevin. Then we asked our visitors, this was one thousand one hundred visitors, "What do you think of Haywood County?" Very similar, but the change here is they talk more about how Haywood County makes them feel, as opposed to the specific assets. That's super incredible, again, it's very positive, it speaks to the power of why so many of our visitors are repeat visitors, and this is what we want to protect, to make sure it's here ten years, twenty years, thirty years in the future, so that we can continue to enjoy it. We can, our kids can, and our future visitors can. And finally, I like to end with this, um, so many of our local stakeholders said, "We are better together," which, as county commissioners, I'm sure you support that wholeheartedly. And I've got a little bit of data that helps highlight that. So this is the data I mentioned early, it's called, earlier, it's called Zartico. It knows if your mobile device moves, if it's fifty miles away from where you live or work, you have to stay here at least two hours to get counted, and you have to go somewhere. You, you can't just drive through, you have to like park your car, get out and go in a restaurant, or go in the festival grounds to get counted. Like I said, it's a little big brotherish, but it's pretty cool. So we see where our visitors come from, this map is actually pretty similar to the one I showed you earlier. Almost seventy-nine percent of our visitors are from out of state. In the spring, of all of the devices in Haywood County, almost forty-one percent were from visitors, which means fifty-nine percent were locals, and there's that visitor spend, forty-one percent. This is where they go. So we geo-fence certain areas of Haywood County. So you can see, the majority of our visitors are going to Maggie Valley Soca Road and to Greater Canton. So I'm going to drill into those real quick. So where are they going in Maggie Valley? Comfort Inn, the Quality Inn, Best Western, Jonathan Creek Inn, Smokey Falls Lodge, Ramada, and the Clarion. They're spending the night in Maggie. But this is where they go in Canton. They're going to Pisgah. They're coming to play in Canton, stay in Maggie, and look where they spend most of their money. So when I say we're better together, we're better together, because we can do amazing things like the NC Smokies Ice Fest Weekend, but from a visitor perspective, we really are one destination, and we need to be looking at it that way. And that is a super quick overview for you of all sorts of fun stuff.
Anybody having questions for Karina?
I, of course, have some comments, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I serve, um, or sit on the board of the executive board also with the TDA, and I will say that I am so encouraged by all the work the staff is doing, led by Karina, of course. You have great support staff, and they, all of y'all are working together in such a great, such a great way. And sometimes, I think as locals, we are concerned about how tourism impacts our travel, or restaurants, or things of that nature. But to say that forty-two percent of all the dollars spent here is impacted by money coming in from someplace else is so impactful to our local budget, those of us that own small businesses and, um... But I think what speaks so loudly to me, and I really want to reiterate this, is what you said toward the end, and, and I never want it to ever be swept under the carpet, what we want to do is protect what we have, so it's here twenty and thirty years from now. And I think that you've really listened, the staff listens, and we are, um, you're really showcasing Haywood County in a way that we are not becoming anybody besides who we are, and that's very important, so I appreciate that very much. And I'm sure all we do and our citizens do as well.
Just to piggyback on what Jennifer said, you know, I was looking at your annual report earlier, and the economic impact, you know, two thousand and sixty-three jobs, you know, that's pretty big, if you think about it. Another big number is eleven point four million dollars, uh, you know, that the visitors spent. On our business, plus it helps the annual budgets, you know, of our municipalities and our county, which is huge, you know, from a sales tax, so, uh, that, that's big.
It is.
Just to piggyback off what Commissioner Beas said, uh, we don't realize how impactful, you know, positively, that, uh, tourism is. Thank you, Karina, for what you do, and, and the staff, and, and, and your board, we, we appreciate it, because it does bring dollars here to the county.
Thank you too for the, I attended the event the other day, and it was a really great presentation, the way they put everything out there and explained everything. Did a real good job on that. I want to sort of, uh, piggyback what, uh, Mr. Beas said too, also on it. I've heard it three times lately, and that's, that's one of the things that really stuck to me. I heard it again this morning at the Farm Bureau breakfast, is we want to stay who we are. We, we don't want to get away from who we are, and, and... I know I, it's, it's beating a dead horse, but there's a lot of people moving here, and we appreciate a lot of people move here, but we would prefer they change like us, instead of us change like them, you know? Because that, that's the reason they moved here, is the, the way Haywood County is. And I wish they'd just slowed down and think the reason they moved here, and, you know, and be more like what they wanted to come to see. And I, I appreciate all you do, because it was, like I say, it was a great presentation the other day, thank you.
Karina, I just, yeah, I wanted to touch on a few things. One of the, one of the words I think that I hear from a, well, that I kind of tell people when they're trying to describe this area is it has a homey feel to it, because you almost feel like it's somewhere you always wanted to be, I guess you could say. I know, um, sometimes I visit areas in our county, and you just want to stay there, you know, for a while, and, and just soak it in. And I also thank you for your, you know, your vision, coming into our county and, uh, capitalizing on the things that we have, and, and like the new festivals that you did, the Ice, uh, Festival, I hate that it rained, I remember that, it was a miserable weekend. But maybe next year it'll be better, and maybe even have a, be, be nice to have a little dust in the snow, so it would bring folks there. And, and one of the things that, um, that impacts our farmers, if you will, because I was at the farmer's breakfast this morning with Terry, was, um... And I've talked with Don Smart about some things, and, uh, the tourism brings in, uh, Beanie Arrington, for example, up at Barbara's Orchard, has capitalized on his apples, uh, to the point that he has to get apples from Henderson County, I believe, to supplement his apple harvest, because he has that store where he takes the middleman out, and he basically, uh, sells apples and pies and all, all kinds of different things there, takes, uh, to the point that he's, um, employs, uh, several people, um, to do this, and, and it's, it's a, a tourism driver, because people, they'll go to Barbara's Orchard Pie Store, you know, to get pies and apples and whatever else they have there. So that's a way that the farmers are capitalizing on that. And I know we have, um, one of the things that we have in our county, that we used to have, was a lot of dairy farms. I think we used to have forty or fifty, and now we're down to like five or six. And so, um, and I've talked, Don has talked to me about, you know, like, a lot of people would like to have raw milk. And North Carolina is one of the few states that do not allow, you know, raw milk. Uh, I think he, I think he had told me, like, over thirty states allow farmers to sell raw milk. And I grew up on raw milk, we, I used to have to milk a cow every morning, and, uh, that's probably what's wrong with me. I had to drink so much milk when I was a kid, but it was, it was the, straight from the cow. So, you know, when you poured a glass of milk, it always had a little bit of cream on top. But, uh, but I think if, uh, anyway, that, that has to do with our state legislature, and they're real close to getting that passed. and they're real close to getting that passed. If farmers can do that, I think they can capitalize on, on a sale that people, they don't want pasteurized milk, they want the raw milk for whatever reason. I think that could be a big industry we can build on as well as, and maybe, and they've talked, some of the dairy farmers have talked about having a creamery. I think that would be a great draw for the tourism. Because we see what's happening with our apples. And then of course, we have our farmer's market, which is in Waynesville. And I guess you guys advertise that probably, it's almost, I think they probably start not, probably, probably pretty soon and they go through December because they even sell Christmas items like wreaths and things like that. So the farmer's market is, has been, has really grown over the years. I know several people that go to that every week and they grow things and they sell things there. And I'd really like to see the county maybe have a cannery or something. I think that would go a long ways to, if we had a, like a cannery where farmers could take, and these are just ideas, that, that kind of tie into the tourism because they could come here. If you had a cannery and the farmers can or whatever they did with that, folks could come and buy, you know, vegetables or canned vegetables from Haywood County. I could see that being a big, a big draw in the future. I know my dad told me when he was little, there was a cannery right there where the recycling, where the, or not the recycling center, but the convenience center is at Bethel School. That used to be a cannery, that location was. So dad told me about that. But anyway, there's just some ideas that I think, working with tourism, that we can expand our farms and our tourism label, if you will, to have people really experience Haywood County in a way that, that they maybe don't experience in other areas that they go to, you know, that we can include their farms and stuff. So maybe you could kind of put that, because you, you're really doing good in, in, in how you are marketing Haywood County, I feel like, and, and understanding the people that are coming here and trying to understand the people coming here and why. So that's, that's real important too, so we know why they're coming here to where we can maybe have business industry kind of cater to that, if you will. So I appreciate all the work y'all have been doing on that, so.
They picked up at Barbara's Orchard, where I think they're shipping to people in Florida and places. They're shipping a lot of apples out.
Yeah, it's, it's a great, anyway, that's just part of our tourism. That's why that's there is because of our tourism industry. And I know they were saying that they'll bake a bunch of pies and there'll be like 25 or 30 people in line waiting to get those pies when they come out of the oven. So it's, it's, that's how big the tourism industry has been driving that, if you will. But Brighton, you wanted to say something?
Last week, I met with Sally Dixon, who's head of cooperative extension. And she had some interesting facts about farming in Haywood County. I think the acreage is down, but the actual amount of produce is up. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to put her on the, an upcoming agenda. So she can kind of give you an update, an update of what farming in Haywood's like because she had some really, really interesting stuff to talk about.
Okay, great, yeah.
Sally's, she's a great representative, she really is doing a good job.
And I think with, with our, you know, with, with how Karina is really getting our tourism kind of focused, if you will, this can be a way to build on our, what we have here. I know when I did, we did economic development study in the early 2000s and we wanted to, to, you want to continue what you have and build on what you have, like Giles Chemical. We want to make sure that those guys stay here and keep coming. And that's the way it is with all our business and industries here. And our farming, the best way, you know, like Don said this morning, the best way to make farming is to make it profitable. And it definitely does for Beanie and some of these folks. And I think if we can get some laws passed, you know, they can sign a waiver that if they get sick, they're not going to sue the farmers if they do drink milk, raw milk, because you do take that, you know, chance. But, but still, if you get it fresh, it's going to be, it's going to be fresh. So anyway, I didn't mean to go phone all that, but you just got my brain thinking this morning. You do that, don't you?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, our next item will be America 250 presentation. And we have Haywood County Historical and Genealogy Society President Mike McLean here. And I think you've got some folks with you?
Yes.
Okay. I know those people.
We're going to introduce them as I go through the presentation, so. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today about a very exciting event coming up in 2026. Let's see if we can get the slide up. Most of us remember the bicentennial. In fact, it's the year that I moved to Haywood County, came to work for Daco in 1976. So it was an important time in my life and I became very acquainted with the history here. And over the years have been involved to the point of where this is a really exciting project for Haywood County and myself. But we have a real good group of people involved in it. We have the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Sons of the American Revolution. I'll, I'll introduce the actual people later in the presentation. We have the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources out of the Western Office in Asheville, Jeff Futsch and his team. And so this is really going to be an important part of the next couple of years, not only in Haywood County, but statewide. Let's see if we can get our slides going. I've got a hard copy, I'll get to.
Well, Mike, you might just, while they're getting, trying to get that, you, you might touch on your organization, how you can participate if they want to, or maybe you was going to do that later, but you might touch on that.
Yeah, sure. The Haywood County Historical and Genealogical Society, here we go. Is, this is from the presentation we made to Bryant Morehead in the early part of the year, February 14th. And that was our initial team that was put together for this. The project started in, actually in 2023, let's see if, there we go. And so in 2026, we commemorate the 250 years since the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That's when our country began. We all are familiar with the beginning, but we find today that there are many people, especially the young people, that don't really know the history of the country and the reason that we chose to leave the British Empire and start our own country. So there's a word in here that I'll try to say, it's the Semi-Quincentennial Commission. So it's like the bicentennial, except it's 250 years. We are calling this America 250. It's not only easier to produce but, and discuss with people, but it really brings us to the point of 250 years of dramatic change, especially in Haywood County. We're going to talk about what Haywood County looked like 250 years ago in this project and bring some of that education to our people in the county. Wrong way, okay. So America 250 was formed by Governor Cooper, what was formed at the federal level as a commission. And then in North Carolina, we have the America 250 NC. This is the North Carolina effort. This Governor Cooper gave the authority to the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to lead this effort. This will not only commemorate the anniversary, but it will be celebrated with exhibits, education, a lot of activities that are just now being discussed. So there is a local grant program and the main reason we're here today is to talk about a resolution to form a county committee. And I'm sure you can't see all that, but all 100 counties have been given the opportunity to form a committee for the celebration of the Semi-Quincentennial. So we will get $10,000 if we have a formal committee appointed. There is going to be additional grants coming in late, not only this year, but in the ongoing years. This is a multi-year project. It's actually intended to go through 2033. So will not only lead up to the celebration, but also continue the educational efforts. One of the primary goals is to educate the eight to 14-year-old group of children. Most of them have not had the exposure nor the direct contact with some of the people that we've had in our lifetime, the Greatest Generation and so on, where we specifically talked about these events. So the county A250 committee is, needs to be formed from a variety of memberships. So we have the, as I mentioned, the Daughters of the American Revolution. We have some representatives here from that group. We have, some of the members are also in the Haywood County Historical and Genealogical Society. For the DAR, Constance Daly, she will speak in a, in a minute just a little bit about their organization. For SAR, Sons of the American Revolution, Joe Sam Queen, he couldn't be here today, but Joe Sam is going to represent the Sons of the American Revolution. Once we began this effort, we were contacted by our friends at the TDA. So Amy Newsom, Karina, they've partnered with us and they'll be a formal part of the committee. And then the Historical Society, which represents a wide breadth of people in Haywood County. So we're just now forming this central committee that's going to, with, with Brian's help, we formed the intention to present a resolution today to make this an official committee. The state will give us the $10,000 as seed money to begin the effort of planning exhibits, planning whatever it is that we think is appropriate for Haywood County. The grant program will, once you have the official committee, will extend then also into the nonprofits. A nonprofit like the Historical Society can apply for another grant, as well as the county itself can apply for another grant. So depending on the scope of our effort, we will be pursuing these efforts. The committee resolution, which I see on the agenda, will follow this discussion to where you'll actually consent to have the committee made official, looks like this. This is a template sent by the America 250 group to use that basically defines how the organization is put together and what we're charged to do. Every, every county has the, a theme to pick from. And so the Revolutionary Ideas Grant is the area we will be focused on. And why, why do we do that? Because this county really began with a military effort. If you look at our country's history, going back to the early days in the 1600s, when New England was really formed in the original 13 colonies, there was no Haywood County. Those efforts until 1776 were in the eastern part of what we know as North Carolina, the colony. But when you came to Old Fort McDowell County, it ended. It was all Cherokee territory. So everything to the west, all of the counties of western North Carolina were under the possession of the Cherokee Nation. So a lot of the efforts of the revolution went into determining how to, how to take on the opportunity with the Cherokee, which was unfortunate for them. They had partnered with the British. So they were our enemy, they were causing a lot of conflict. And this is a delicate subject, but we will be treating it from a historical viewpoint as accurately as we can going forward. But it began with what's known as the Rutherford Trace. The Rutherford Expedition began in Old Fort. 2,500 militia marched in August, in September, and October of 1776 through here on what's known as the Rutherford Trace. That is what began Haywood County because many of the soldiers came back and after they marched through here, they came to Canton, spent the first night in Canton, went through Bethel, came up Pigeon Gap into Hazelwood, spent the night there, and then went on to Balsam and the further western North Carolina. It's quite a story in itself. And most people, when you ask about the Rutherford Trace, they can relate to the historical markers on the roads as you drive through Haywood County, but that's about it. And so that's one of the areas we're going to focus on is speaking about the Rutherford Trace, speaking about the people like Jacob Shook that came back and settled in Clyde. And a lot of the connections of the, I think there's 12 soldiers that came back to Haywood County and settled here. So we'll be focused on the Rutherford Trace, but also exhibits and historical aspects right here in Haywood County. The Rutherford Trace went over seven counties, seven present-day counties. When the soldiers marched, there was really not a lot of death. There, there was battles and I think there were six people killed on that Rutherford Trace. But it was a very monumental event for Haywood County, for the Cherokee Nation, and for the early settlers here in Haywood County. So the next steps on the committee is really to formalize it with the resolution that's in front of you today. We have a steering committee formed with the representatives that I mentioned earlier. The resolution will be submitted to the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources in order to get the grant funding. We have a planning session next week, assuming that everything goes well today. We have a planning session of our team to address how we will use the $10,000. We have two pages of guidance that came from Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to what the money is to be used for. But it's all about promotion. The education is really the focus that we think is the most important. In fact, we're going to engage our seven active community centers. That's Bethel, Feins Creek, Beaver Dam, the ones that are part of the County Community Development Council. And we will be having classes over the next few years at these community centers where all residents will be invited to come learn about the revolution, learn about what makes up this country and hopefully bring some education to those people. Before I open it up for questions, I wanted to have Constance Daly give a couple of words about the DAR.
Good morning, everyone. I had just a few words here. The National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution has a three-prong mission for historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Celebrating our nation's Semi-Quincentennial here in Haywood County provides an exciting opportunity for our chapter, the Hugh Rogers chapter, to work alongside other organizations throughout Haywood County and western North Carolina. We are proud to be a part of this committee. I'm also speaking for the SAR. The Western Waters Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution has purposes which are patriotic, historical, and educational. They are already actively engaged in promoting all of these purposes regarding the American Revolution and are looking forward to America's 250th birthday being celebrated here in Haywood County and beyond. Thank you.
So if we have any questions now, we'd be happy to talk further about it.
Hey, Charles, work, you know, that y'all do and everything, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I know when I, when I search my, when you kind of search your genealogy, you, if you go back before 1776, it says, I think it says that people were in America. It says it was that they were a colony of, of Great Britain and stuff. So that was like, oh wow, yeah, you're right, we've not been here that long, our country hadn't. Okay, our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda. And I do not have anything. Does anybody have any discussion or adjustment agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are eight items. to the consent agenda. There are eight items. Does any of the commissioners have a question on any of the items, the eight items that they need clarified?
No clarification, but just Mr. McLean's point, we will be voting on that resolution, which is item two, just so everyone's aware. And also, another keynote is two of the flood trailers that we had purchased and used. We're going to be conveying those. So I think we had pointed that out in the past, that we're just not letting these things sit. We're actually passing them on for some good use. So just two key, key things I wanted to point out.
Great. Okay, can I, all entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye? Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. We'll move to our regular agenda. The first item is to request approval to accept a memorandum of agreement, 4588-010, between Haywood County and the North Carolina Department of Public Safety's Division of Emergency Management for the Hazard Mitigation Property Acquisition Project. And it's to appropriate funds in the amount of $26,500 a year for a period of two years for the associated cost, to fulfill the county's administrative obligations and approval for county manager to execute all documents associated with said agreement. And we have our, the project manager, Cody Grasty, here to speak to that this morning. Welcome, Cody.
Thank you.
That was a mouthful.
It was.
Yeah. Good morning, commissioners. In front of you for your approval this morning is, is the MOA between Haywood County Memorandum of Understanding or Agreement between Haywood County and the state. It's one of two documents that is coming before you. The second one is coming shortly. You're at a future meeting. This will cover 20 properties in the Hazard Mitigation Program. Sometime back, the county agreed to a state-centric model for acquisition and demolition of these properties, which means that the state will be, through this agreement, the state will be responsible for hiring the contractor for appraising, acquiring, and then ultimately demolition of the properties. Our purpose in this is to continue to be the point of contact for county residents, and also be the liaison between county residents and the contractors that they're hiring. The $26,500 per year costs the, or covers the costs of hiring a contractor for the county to serve as a point of contact, and to also augment staff salaries for a part-time position. That comes at no cost to us, and it's reimbursement-based. And we're projecting that it'll take about two years for this project to be completed. The second agreement, which will come in the future, will cover the remainder of the counties. And it's just, it's just that this was first out of the gate. The next one is probably a week or two weeks behind my comments here right now. So that's what we're seeking approval for today.
We got any questions on that? Brandon? Okay, all right. Okay. I entertain a motion. Will you approve item one of the regular agenda?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is to request approval to award a contract in the amount of $315,000 for two Type II FR conversion van ambulances on Ram ProMaster 3500 chassis to emergency manage, I'm sorry, to Atlantic Emergency Solutions as the lowest responsive bidder on Haywood County bid number 022224, and approval for county manager to execute all associated documents with the purchase. And our emergency service director, Travis Donaldson, is here today. Welcome, Travis. That was another mouthful.
Good morning, commissioners. Doing good. Still, still adjusting at home with the, with the.
That little, little.
Little one that's joined us. But I'm here this morning to, to get approval to proceed with the purchase of two of these ambulances for the convalescent ambulance stuff that was approved back in January. These were put out for bid. The bidder was the lowest bidder by, I think, about $1,200 per truck. They're saying that hopefully we'll have these no later than the middle of June.
Okay, great.
That's great. June of '24?
June of this year, yes. Much different than the other ones that we've dealt with.
That's wonderful.
At least, they do have these trucks in production already. They were stock units. So that was the intent, what we were looking forward to try to capture, so.
And are they smaller units, just not as large as the regular ambulances?
They are. They're like a plumbing van, for lack of better comparison, that's converted into an ambulance. It's smaller quarters, don't have a lot of storage. But for what they're going to be doing, they'll serve that purpose fine.
Any other questions?
We just have two of these total. Is that right?
Correct. And they'll be, they're Dodge ProMasters. They're, I believe, front-wheel drive trucks, so.
Okay. Okay, all entertain a motion. We approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? 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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. You hang in there, okay?
Who needs sleep, right?
Number, item number three is to request approval of a budget amendment, public safety, $271,117 to accept and appropriate balance of the LATCF funds received and unspent in fiscal year 2023 to be used for the construction of the EMS base on Russ Avenue, and approval for county manager to sign any necessary related documents. And our finance director, Christian Owen, will speak to that. Welcome, Christian.
Good morning. We have some, some long agenda descriptions today. Yes, these are the LAT, which is the Local Assistance Travel Consistency Fund, which is very similar, not exactly the same, but very similar to our PILT funds. This was a, an arm of the ARPA funds. What we're going to use these funds for is to supplement our ARPA funds for the EMS construction off of Russ Avenue. We received these funds in FY23 and did not budget or spend any, or, we did not budget or spend $271,000 of those funds. So this will be coming from fund balance.
Any discussion on that?
If you don't mind explaining, again, where are these funds coming from? I know the acronym there, but where do they actually?
This was, yeah, this was a federal program, very, very similar to ARPA. It's kind of aligned. It comes through the US Treasury, just like the ARPA funds does. It's for any counties that have federal lands that are not subject to tax, very similarly to the PILT funds.
So that's why we qualified for it, I guess. Okay, good. Okay, do we have a motion and a second? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, okay. Okay, all in favor say aye? Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for, Christian. Okay, number four is to request approval of a budget amendment for social services, $16,707 to recognize the actual revenue carryover from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24, and adjust the expense accordingly for the Rural Operating Assistance Program, known as ROP. And we have our Health and Human Services Director, Ira Dove, this morning to speak to that. Ira?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Yes, this, this funding comes from the state of North Carolina and goes through the Rural Operating Assistance Program, and it's basically transportation assistance. Last fiscal year, didn't spend all of the funds, and so we're asking to roll them over into this year so that we can spend them. The money will be spent on workforce development, so it will go for transportation of people that need it to and from work. It could be employment training. They could be going to the community college, or, or any of those kinds of things. The money will actually be, go through our program, which is work first, but we'll also be using some of the money through mountain projects, so that the general public can, can take more advantage of this to get to work, if they need, need help getting to work or getting to school to train for work.
Any questions? Okay, I entertain a motion. We approve item four. Okay, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? 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 Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we do not have appointments or closed session today. Does anybody have any other business before the board today?
I, I would want to mention one thing. So this was sent to me during the meeting. So the Haywood County Library is part, this is National Library Week, and they are having a bookmark contest. And you can submit your design for this year's National Library Week bookmark. And let's see, you can contact Zachary Jones with the Haywood County Library if you have any additional questions about that. So it's a good time to visit your public library and enter that contest.
I think, did I forget to mention, I bet I did. Under constituent concerns, I meant to mention that National Library Week starts April 7th. So Amy and even had that down for me to do. And I do appreciate you guys, I know I was saying it was real wordy, and it has to be, because we have to tell exactly what we're voting on, and that's what we do. So I appreciate y'all putting all that together, because I'm sure that takes a while. And when it comes before us, it's just, we just read it, so it's, okay. Okay, any other, anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn then.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye?
Aye?